Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so now being shortly after six, we'll call the open session of the Board of Selectment to Order. We met at 5:30 for a brief executive session, and now we're regular, uh, ready to move into the open session of our meeting. And this meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. The first item on our agenda is to reaffirm the board's votes on, um, May 20th. So I'd like to make a motion that we reaffirm all of the votes taken by the Board of Selectment at our meeting on 5:20.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, on to warrants paid. So we've got a warrant for South Shore Generator for $8,995. We've got a warrant for $8,443.39 for some Memorial Day expenses. ADT, looks like about $400, $580 for ADT. KP Law, $7,095.57. Columbia Gas, $61601. And a second Columbia Gas for a second account, $14411, for a total of $8,443.49. We've also got the Express, the paper, and that is $267. And our last warrant is, I'm sorry, two more, is $2,781.61. Looks like it's basically Eversource, a variety of bills. There's a Verizon bill in here and some Coast bills. And last is a bill for Eversource for $293.88. So that is a report on the warrants paid.
I'll take this.
All right, so, um, perfect timing. Denit Elementary Water Testing, or Water Update. Do you have an update on the Denit water, John? What's going on?
I said I come, I didn't want to talk about it. Um, yeah, so, we have a big new water system up there, the big beautiful copper pipes, and it's taking out a bunch of things, and it appears to be putting lead in. Though we have not had that confirmed yet. So, the issue is this, before we have the system, um, we had issues with magnesium, and some other issues up there. We had a positive lead test three years ago during the summer, but that appeared to be an issue with when they threw the sample, and that the school wasn't doing any use, and they were, because everything after it came offline. They turned on the new system, and within a few months, we started showing random readings of lead throughout the building with the different classes in the classrooms. The building is, you know, half of it is old, nineteen seventy-one or so, when they built the building originally, and half of it is, well, less than half of it is what was put in in 2001. So, they stopped using lead and solder in the eighties, leaving only completely eighties. And even if some of that was originally still used, it was supposed to, certainly was not used in the building. All of the fixtures that are in the classrooms and in all of the rest of the whole school have been replaced within the last few years, and I have to make sure that we didn't have any issues with that. So it's not coming from the fixtures, it's not coming from pipes in the new part of the building. And we've done tests of the water coming out from the well before it hits the system. And there are some minor levels of lead just from the water itself. But nothing that explains the levels that have triggered the concern. So, that kind of leaves you from a logic perspective that if the water coming in doesn't have issues, and the water on the other side of the system has issues, then it's got to have something to do with what's going on in the system. We have had numerous tests done, the most recent tests were just done and sent to the consultant that we had hired to help with the system, Green Zero Environmental. Peter Video's been in contact with them. Peter unfortunately wasn't in the theater meeting tonight due to a family issue. But, it's time for me to get from him what the most recent stuff is, and also to reach out to Green Zero. Because we need to find an answer to this after the money we spent with the system in, which is what was designed and approved by EDP. And the system, not only does it remove, as many of the household systems that we have in town, not only does it remove magnesium and the iron, but it also adjusts the pH. And so one of the main reasons we end up with various metals in the water, whether it be lead or copper, is because the water here is acidic. And it reaches, it out as it's from the fridge. So we have adjusted pH, so that it's less acidic, so we should have less lead, not more. And the readings also are pretty random all over the school, with respect to different classrooms, and they're reading different things at each time, and it's no, it doesn't matter whether they're a new classroom or an older classroom, so it's really is a pretty perplexing situation. One of the theories is something to do with whether how it's backwashing, and whether it's backwashing correctly, and whether it's, you know, it's filtering out little bits of lead, and it's building up, and then it isn't getting properly backwashing, and they have to be sort of reintroducing it once. We do not have an answer yet, but I was very thrilled to not have it on our agenda for two meetings, and it has been there again. So, it is, it's very much the committee's, the committee's desire to get this resolved, so that we can stop talking about it.
Is there a guarantee with the system that they installed that it would remove the lead and, or warranties, anything that we can be working off of where it's, we're not going to have to pay traditional work?
We have an issue where there isn't the lead to remove to begin with. So that's our fundamental problem here. So something is happening, and, you know, they, we put the system in, and there should be some recourse. You know, the manufacturers plan to the system is working properly, but clearly it's not if we have something showing up on the other end that isn't there. So, I think the next steps are to, to work perhaps a little more closely with the consultant to get them properly re-engaged, because we've been patient given the time now.
And the water is safe to drink?
Uh, they are not using it for drinking.
Okay. You have any questions, Mark, John?
Sure.
Board of directors, ready to move on? No. Yeah, we have not stopped the bottled water.
All right, no questions for John? All right, so let us know if there's anything we can do to help John.
Yep. A couple of other little items that I thought would be worth sharing if you guys are interested. We are going to have a pretty big class coming into the Denit, and just to give perspective there, this will be really the first time since I've been on the committee that this is making an increase in the student body.
Is this the kindergarten class?
This is the new kindergarten class coming in. It is currently projected to be thirty-nine kids.
Excellent.
That will be a net increase of nineteen kids, because the class that's gone out is actually quite small. It wasn't, it wasn't this small, but we had a number of kids that in the last year, so it's only twenty kids coming out in the sixth grade. And then we also have what will be the fifth grade next year, which is another small class of twenty-two children, of which five of those are school choice kids. But what you're, what you're likely going to see is when that class goes out too, that we're going to have a class that's going to become bigger. The current kindergarten class, which is the first grade, is only twenty-nine, and the first grade and the second grade is thirty-five. So, numbers are up.
That's great.
So, let me understand, John, you have twenty-nine in kindergarten now, and you're going to add thirty-nine, or it's going to be a total?
I'll add with the kindergarten class and do the first grade next year. So, the new incoming kindergarten class is projected to be thirty-nine kids.
With two teachers, right?
Correct. And it's, and two ages.
Yep.
And that, and that number has probably more potential to go up than down over the summer. The other item, we looked through the budget this afternoon, this evening, and they're still projecting a surplus of about $21,700 being returned to the town. I don't know how that would evoke line item, and that's after the money that we transferred.
Transfers.
So that's still coming back. And then, the other item was noticed as Christine's doing the books, is that there appears, it doesn't appear that our second budget that we actually voted on made it to FinCon and made it into what we voted down here. So you actually voted a budget that was about $10,000 more than what we did. We re-voted the first budget tonight, so that we can keep everything lined up in order. But, the district will run on the second budget. So there will be some balance in the change that we voted out of the budget that will be sitting there, but you can come back to the town next year.
Good.
So, you know, the balances are there, we just missed something. So, and Christine also said she's now adding another to her regular checklist to make sure that they're getting around to their needs too, so that we can vote the correct budget. We vote, sorry.
Excellent.
All right.
Very good. Well, thanks, John. That very thorough report. All right, any questions? Okay, all right, let's move on. Plimpton Council on Aging Ban update. Is there one?
You're asking me? No, not really, since the last one. I think Joey attended a grant writing, or a grant conference at the State Building to understand where we might go after. I think our initial response is that we were too late for one that might have worked, and now we're trying to, she's trying to find others that might work. And I think when we, from July first, we had the grant writer opportunity, and that should be one of the main things we go after. In the meantime, I'll try to take a look, but see what we can find.
Well, there is the Best Practices Grant that would be available for us to apply for in August, to look at senior transportation, or basically more broadly, other senior needs, housing and transportation, and welfare type needs, exercise activities, social, everything, where we could apply for a grant for that. There is a little bit of confusion. We still don't have a firm date as to when we're actually eligible to apply for another shared services grant. We were awarded the grant to explore the fire shared services, March 28th of 2018, and I could have sworn, I read somewhere in there, that it has to be two years before you can apply for another one. So there would be a little bit of a downtime before we could apply for another shared services grant, but Liz is in the process of confirming whether or not we're eligible to apply now, or whether there's some timeframe that we have to, that we're not eligible.
We also have a technology grant we may be eligible for. We got the technology grant, I think it was two years ago, and there's a one year in YAP to kind of reapply, but I think we could reapply. And one of the things we've talked about is part of that grant is having an infrastructure survey now, because we need to move forward and understand how we're going to
Sure.
map out technology.
So you'll apply for that, or are you going to wait for the
Yeah, we'll cut into that.
The deadlines on that? I mean, you might be able to wait for the grant writer, but I'm not sure.
We were also applying for a smaller scale, I wouldn't really call it a full IT audit, but kind of small scale stuff. But they would take a look generally at what we have for systems. And that appears to be a very simple process through the state. So I sent in the initial form, and waiting to hear back on that. And also in regard to the shared services, I was made aware later today that Sean is no longer with DOR, so I had to send my inquiry to somebody else.
Okay.
Sean Corrigan?
Uh, Sean Powers.
Sean Powers.
Oh, Sean Powers, okay.
So, I'm waiting to hear back on that.
All right, so Liz will let us know after she hears back.
Just one thought, just so we think about it. If you end up doing the technology grant, don't forget about the new meeting room at the police station. It was one of those, for some reason it wasn't any money in the budget.
Well, I think we were going to pull in Silver Lake's IT guy to help us with this grant, so that we were all kind of on the same page with technology in the different buildings.
We have, we have the room wired.
It's wired, right? You just need the, the equipment.
It was just, money was all done.
Thank you, Philip. I made note. Thank you.
Perfect, thanks, John. Okay, Townhouse Parking. We talked about this, coming up with a parking plan. I hadn't heard back from Hayes about what their baseball schedule is. Did you hear anything, Bray?
No, just, they keep saying where they want to use the
So do we want to hold this one until next time? So, because what we were trying to determine was basically a sense of urgency about coming up with a plan, and knowing what their schedule is was kind of germane to this. If they're going to be using the fields several times during the week, or if they're just using it on Saturdays for games, it kind of escalates whether or not we need to address this right away, or whether we have a little bit of time to get it squared away.
I think one of the issues is, you know, the parking, can we get up to the field? I know they had a movie night, Sandy.
I think the basic concept here is, is that where we were getting up to the field is not the best place to do it anyways. This is my personal opinion, because it's like that.
Right.
Now it's like this, because we cut into that hill more. But if you just come around here, over toward the batting gate, it's a very gradual incline.
Right, it's a gradual incline.
Which shouldn't need for the amount that you're going up there, because it's never been used as like full-fledged parking.
Right.
But, you know, certainly in the short term, it shouldn't, they should have easy access up there. And I know that when we were doing the construction, there was some stuff in the way, which has since, which has now moved.
That would work fine. You can see it out here, it's nice.
Yeah, let the grass grow a little bit, so we're all kind of, and then from a pedestrian access, you know, from the parking lot, once the beautiful trailer is no longer there, there's access. I mean, you go between the fire station and the trailer, there's easy access.
Right.
Built from a, from a pedestrian, it's just that it's kind of, no one sees it. It's sort of like a whole wall, you know? So then you get to the other side. So, you know, hopefully for this season, they should have the ability, you know, to, you know, get the access that they need. And then we can, as part of the grand plan, figure out what we should be doing there.
We just got to get the sign that says no authorization, or no
Was that taken down?
No.
I asked Scott. I'll send him something. He did create the other handicap spot for us.
Oh, he did, good.
I know the one time that they did want to come up, and they had the concern of the field, it was during setup and cleanup.
Okay.
And it was, they wanted to know to access it that way. I don't think that they drive up there that much. I did see kids practicing, and they parked here and walked up like they always do.
It may not be as big a issue now that we've got the police parking over here. You know, we freed up more spaces, and some of it can park in the side.
Yeah, right along back here, even.
So, it may work.
I'll ask Amy again, though. Maybe she can send me the schedule.
Yeah, that would be great, if we got the schedule, and that you made her aware that there is a way to park up there. And I don't think these kids are going to be hitting the ball over the fence. The little ones that I saw were, they're going to be taking out windshields, so it should be okay.
I think the bigger issue was getting up there for maintenance.
Okay. So it may, from their standpoint, it may be a non-issue at this point, but it's still our issue, but, um, okay.
I think it's just going to be a short-term issue until the grass grows.
Okay. All right, so you want to hold this?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll Townhouse Parking.
Do you want to, on the next one, or no?
Um, when are we?
Two weeks out, maybe, because there's going to be things going on, you know, over the summer. I don't know if we'll get this all resolved over the summer or not.
All right, sounds good. All right, so discuss the continuing role of the Public Safety Building Committee.
Yeah, so I asked for that one to be on. Public Safety Building Committee meets Wednesday night. Probably have one or two more monthly meetings, just to finish up the odds and ends on the new police station. Couple people have approached me as to what the Board of Selectmen were thinking about that committee either continuing to be in existence or not. I think that committee worked tremendously well. It really has a legacy of seven or eight years, and I think had a really nice mix of people. So, my personal hope is that the committee might stay functioning, if only to be available once or twice a year. And as time goes on, we may have questions on the fire station, and what little work we do over there. So really, I just, I'll be sitting with them Wednesday night, and I was hoping to convey our sense that if they were willing to continue to serve, there's certainly be some use along the way. On a bigger level, it's sort of beginning to occur to me that as, hopefully pretty soon we start moving forward with the master plan, that that might be a committee that could easily morph into, and I think is actually pretty much the right mix of people for that.
I agree. I think we need a committee to morph in, so that we don't have everybody going off their separate ways. We've talked about that enough.
Yeah.
So, I think that's a great idea.
Well, and maybe they could start with the Townhouse Parking.
Actually, and that's something that comes up in discussion all the time, and it's something that's been in discussion for fifteen years, and maybe we're getting a little closer. So in any event, I will let the committee know of our enthusiasm for their work, and hopefully it can
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's worked in that space before we decided on the police station. We couldn't, you know, we had to first decide where everything we really wanted to decide that, yes, the police station is going, before we decided. We had to do some sort of, at least, you know, test the waters for, how could we reconfigure some things? And so there was some drawings that were done, and Liz, I know you've gotten copies of some of those.
Yes.
You know, in order to be able to say this made sense, and didn't perpude other places and habits, as well as made sense to buy the additional land that we bought. So, this group had already done some thinking on that, not that we were anywhere near it, but we had to do it, not then to validate.
Sounds like a perfect fit, then, to talk about future needs and having you guys kind of
It does bring up that bigger issue, is that we have so many decisions, including some stuff that's on this agenda, that everything kind of depends on everything else. Have we made any progress with Old Colony on?
We have not. That was, I was actually going to get on that during my update. I'm still waiting for the final version of the Town Center Master Plan. I think we had intended to use as kind of a stepping stone to get the process going, and to start a conversation about this whole campus.
Okay.
So, might they be able to give us some estimated date, or at least which decade of summer? That slipped out.
I will send another follow-up.
Yeah, they do really good work. They need to just wrap this up. We need to be done with this, yes. So we can move on to the next project with them. Okay, update on appointments for FY '20. Do we have an update?
We have some of them, and the offices have been communicating with each other, but we don't have all of them, no.
Are we going to do these in balls like we've done in the past?
Yes.
When do we develop?
So, we'll send one, we wanted to do it, the deadline I sent to people was for the twelfth, did we say the twelfth? So we could have it for the meeting for the seventeenth, because we don't meet on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
So you're going to chop the memory of some of those chairs, or?
So I was thinking, maybe some of them will be meeting tonight, in this week, and then we'll find out more. But, between the clerk's office and the email I sent back and forth, it's, this sum have done.
Okay, thanks.
And Mark has updated some of us on one that he
Okay, Town Own Land Disposition Process. Liz had provided us with a draft of a process for the disposition of town-owned land, and, did you guys get a chance to read it?
We did. It's very brief. I think at some point, maybe not now, we've got enough on our plate right now, but we might want to take a look at what other towns have done, and maybe enlarge that a little. We just went through the land sale this past week, and that seemed to go well. So we're not faced with, you know, any sort of a deadline, but I think out there, it should be expanded. It's not robust enough as it stands.
All right, so you want to continue to work on that, or?
Sure. I had received input from Linda Letty on that, as far as some of the different entities we should be checking with prior to making a decision as to whether or not to put land up for sale. If you want to expand upon those different boards and committees, or maybe create more of a process for it, we could certainly do that.
Well, it's basically just to prevent land that may be of value to some group, town organization
To one particular town entity from going up for sale.
For going up for sale, right. So, I mean, isn't that the intent of this? It's just to ensure that there's
I think it is. Maybe what we're missing is kind of a timeline, or the time of year we want to do it, just so that it happens each year.
You could set it for the same time each year.
And this year, we did it, yeah, that works out.
A big part of it is somewhat dictated by the treasurer, who acts as our custodian for these transactions, and how long it takes her to go through that process. But, another idea I had was that maybe we could build upon the items that go out in that package to the various boards and committees, to see if they're interested. I think it should be a little more than just a map ID. Maybe give them some background info, so that if they want to look into it and see if it's of use.
It, it does bring up the even kind of bigger part of this, is that best practice of appropriate boards and commissions, once a year, looking at land, looking at Chapter 61 land, creating a relationship with possible sellers ahead of time. And that might be a one-year summit. Maybe those kind of work together in a timeline.
Another thing, too, is if we eventually put together a group to look at a real master plan for the Town Center, and I don't know if maybe there's been any thought given to kind of repurposing the Public Safety Building Committee in that respect, where they, where everybody worked so well together. But, once that group gets put together, I think they should be receiving notification and knowledge of any land like that, in case it's something that could fit in with the master plan.
Yeah, as well as the other groups.
Either here in the center, or even town-wide. It's something that we definitely, we would want on that radar, too.
Absolutely.
But I don't know if we're ready to set up another committee just yet, but I think if we could kind of build on the Public Safety Building Committee, and maybe take a look at this whole campus, and then expand out from there, I think that would be beneficial. And we could use the Old Colony plan as just sort of a starting point.
I hope those guys knew that, and ladies, it was a lifetime appointment that I could make.
Yeah, nobody gets off.
Are there any other type?
No.
No, exactly, not in Plimpton. So, do we want to hold this to try to tighten it up a little bit, get some timelines in here?
I think I would put it on the parking lot.
Okay. I'd, I'd like to get it off the radar.
Yeah, I think
Let's just finish it.
Yeah.
And then
For next meeting, we can come up with something a little more concrete.
Okay.
And get it.
Well, and it would be nice to have this in place in the event something were to come up, too, rather than to hold it and, you know, we don't have our ducks in a row if a parcel came up. Okay, so let's put this on the agenda for next time. Sure, John?
So, as, as part of that, I mean, if we add the parcel, it's going to end up going for sale. There's going to have to be a description and some information and all that, about, hey, this is what you want, give us some money for it. So does it make sense to have sort of a form that you do at the beginning part of that, that is filled out based on the various information that's contained within the building, from the accessories, from the treasurer and all that?
Yeah, it does.
It does.
That, when it hits any committee or board that has that information more so than just the, just the ID. So, because you can look at the ID, and you go, oh, that'd be great, and you find out it's ninety-eight percent wetlands, at which point it's kind of
That's a great
Nice for the dogs.
Right.
You know, but I think that would be, I know that might mean a little bit more work upfront, but it also could be something that could be done for all of the town parcels to get, sort of gather that information, and then at the point that you're making that decision to execute and move it forward, it's there. So it could be something done over time.
Also help us with, people approach us and ask us about land, and it's never clear, you know, how you get, you get to an endpoint, but in the middle, it's very rare. how you get, you get to an endpoint, but in the middle, it's very rare. And we need to be clear, especially if the people are in town.
And they want to buy parcels?
Because there's a couple of plots that we've been talking about for years now.
Years.
Right. So I think that would fit into what you're, what you're saying, John. I think it's a good idea.
Okay. All right, so we'll hold that for our next meeting. Town property maintenance schedule to the OS parking lot.
So this is mine. It's a pretty minor point, but the thought was triggered out of our last meeting that I'd like to put on the parking lot the possibility of creating a more formal maintenance schedule, maybe even a budget line for that. So many organizations just balance their budget each year by delayed maintenance and then things tend to fall apart and get even more expensive. I think it was triggered by the flagpole out at the green that, you know, I think if we paid a little bit of attention to those kinds of things each year and it's kind of chipped away at them each year. So, long-winded way to say, sorry with you, that maybe we add that to the parking lot so we don't lose it in the next fiscal year.
Sounds good to me. Sound good to you?
Yes, it also brings to mind though the capital plan. We haven't seen that, five-year capital plan. And so we're not sure what's gonna be covered under maintenance versus capital. I think we have to get that going. That's gonna be instrumental when we, if we do go forward with this grant writer, making decisions about what we pursue. So it fits into this and I'm all for it.
Okay. All right, townhouse summer hours. What I had proposed is that we started this in, that we maintain the meeting schedule through June and then like effective July 1st, we go to the summer meeting schedule.
Which is?
And then we would go, well, here's the thing, when I looked at it, it'll be two, it'll actually be three weeks because we're, we meet on the 17th, so we wouldn't meet on the 24th, we wouldn't meet on the 1st, and we would then meet on the 8th. But what we can do is if something came up that required our attention, we could schedule a meeting. Either the week of the 24th, probably not the first week in July. And we may, we may have to do a meeting that last Monday in June if we don't have all the appointments.
The current schedule is no problem for me, so it's really, you know, I'll do whatever you wish.
Okay. Does that work for you? So it would be the 8th?
The 22nd, the 5th, and the 19th.
And then we would go to the Tuesday after Labor Day?
You gotta hand me here.
July 8th.
July 8th?
Right.
Okay.
July 22nd.
Okay.
August 5th? August 19th.
Works for me.
Okay. All right, so then in the event if something came up, we can reserve that we may need to hold a meeting that last week in June. And if not, then it'll just be three weeks between our meeting. Okay.
And the townhouse, so they'll get every other Monday off?
Pardon me?
The townhouse will get every other Monday off.
That if they choose to adopt the summer schedule, yes.
They're not gonna cut our pay, are they, for three weeks then?
I don't know. It may be down to a quarter.
All sounds bad.
We actually may owe money at the end of the year.
Would you like me to send something out?
Could you? That would be great, that that's the schedule that we're gonna adopt for the summer.
Sure.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, tour of townhouse basement and former police station, so that's the last thing that we're gonna do. Boards' goals for 2019, long-range master plan for town campus, we talked about that. We're working to try to get the plan from OCPC, Old Colony Planning Council, senior citizens' needs, shared services. We had talked about this briefly and we talked about it a little bit tonight, the possibility of applying for a shared services grant. I haven't reached out to Halifax to see if there's any interest.
I think we should slow walk that for a minute. They just got a new member.
Well, and we don't even know if we're eligible to apply for a grant yet.
I thought it was two years.
We talked to Colin Dennis first and see what his...
Okay, so why don't we find out about when we're eligible to apply for grants? Because it would affect both the towns because we're gonna have the same eligibility standard. And then after we find out, if we can talk to Tom Elias. Okay, all right, grant acquisition, our grant writer starts, 7-1?
We've talked about that.
And then continue, ah, I'm tongue-tied today, continue professionalization of town general and financial operations. That's kind of something we are always working on, always on our mind. Volunteer outreach, strengthen town committees, boards and commissions. This is something that we've been working on as well. We had talked about kind of dividing up and meeting with different groups to see if we can generate some interest.
I did meet with the seniors through the council on aging. How about CASA, are you gonna do that?
I'm gonna do CASA and I will meet with them, the first meeting in August. I'm sorry, September, September. August is a, basically just an organizational meeting and she's gonna put me on their agenda for September to go in and talk just about volunteer opportunities at the town.
The other two groups that are very active, I would think we had to talk to is Paze and the Boy Scout, Girl Scouts, Brownies.
Yeah, I was hoping to pay, talk to Paze when we talked about their schedule. So we'll, we can continue to work with them too to see. And they've got soccer coming up and I think the sign-ups are...
And they're active.
Yeah, due relatively soon, right. So they're extending their season, so it'd be a more of an opportunity to speak with them. All right, explore affordable housing opportunities and use of town-owned land and buildings. We talked about that tonight. Support town administrators' goals. We're working to support Liz's goals. Continue protecting town's natural resources and unique character. This town-owned land disposition process certainly furthers our goal for that. And encourage fiscally sound governance, which is done by other groups as well. Thank you, school committee, for coming in under budget. All right, so town administrator updates.
So we covered the technology, the technology grant and what we're working on with that. I'm working with some colleagues from some other South Shore communities on developing some HR templates that we can use, including that for the performance evaluation, which the Wage and Personnel Board will be using. I'm also working in connection with the Wage and Personnel Board on getting the intern up and running. And they're going to be taking a look at the fire department and all of their positions and the salary ranges, just to kind of make sure that that's in line with other communities. So that's sort of their first order of business.
So Gabby's accepted?
Yes.
And do we have a date?
He's already like getting started with them, yes.
Good.
We already covered that we're still waiting for OCPC on the master plan. I'm also waiting to hear back on some follow-up information that we submitted for this year's Green Communities Grant. In, to be specific, we're waiting to see about the number of Energy Star appliances that we requested, which included some provisions for the fire department to get them up and running and self-sufficient over there so we can dispose of the trailer at some point in the near future.
Is there a, is that just ongoing, Liz, or is that something, we have a date, we gotta do it by?
They, well, so our application's already in.
Yeah.
And then they requested some follow-up information from us on the current model numbers of our existing appliances as part of that grant. And typically they award in mid-July.
So it's only when you're replacing something. They wouldn't, for instance, if we wanted something up in the old townhouse?
Well, I did...
Police station, you know, police station.
I put those in. I looked at their old ones. So I included those, the ones from the break room here and the ones at the fire department currently. They'll only do refrigerators and stoves.
Yeah.
So...
Tribeca plus.
And then we can take a look, even if we don't get all of them, we can look at what we have and the age of some of them and maybe cycle them out appropriately. I've been working with the Hanson Town Administrator and talking with our Conservation Commission about the idea of possibly a shared conservation agent. Hanson had approached us when they realized that we were budgeting for that position for next fiscal year. And I'm working with Linda Letty on getting the job advertisement put together for that. So that should go out tomorrow. Because it's a wage and personnel position, it is required to be posted internally for eight business days. And then we can advertise outside with MACC, area conservation commissions and that sort of thing to get the word out.
So what was the number we had in the budget?
It was for $30 per hour and the hours would be less. No, I think it was 18,000-ish.
So how would that work with Hanson?
So that we're still trying to kind of iron out. I've been talking with their town admin and with the chair of their Conservation Commission. They're open to pretty much anything as far as something that would make it more viable for somebody. If they bring in a professional, they can only afford a small number of hours per week and we're kind of in the same boat.
Yep.
In talking with Linda, we're both kind of of the same mindset that I think it's best if we do our thing and find somebody that we think is qualified and competent, but keep Hanson involved in our process. Because they had somebody not that long ago and then the person had left. So they haven't started their new hiring process yet. So I'm wondering if we can get out in front of that. And we want to make sure that the person's a good fit. So we had some hesitation about advertising it specifically as a joint position, but maybe just something that we suggest to them.
Kind of reduces the pool we're talking to, that's all, you know, in terms of the dollars that we've got to go up for.
It does, but as far as the hourly rate and everything, it is competitive with what other places are paying.
Okay.
And in a lot of those positions, sometimes you can actually draw very qualified people who maybe they're consultants at a firm for a certain number of hours per week and they're just looking for something kind of on the side.
Sure.
So we're keeping our options open with that.
Is the situation with the Hanson Town Administrator going to the...
I don't think so. Right now, we just want to get the advertisement out and kind of see what response we get. We'll probably have the posting out, I would imagine, through July 15th to make sure that it really gets out there and has enough time to get into some of the MACC publications. And then at that point, depending on what the pool looks like, and there are some details to be worked out with Hanson in that regard. But we, we need to figure out if it makes sense to come at it from a joint perspective and say like this is what we're proposing, or if we want that to be more of a suggestion to somebody in either community. It looks like we'll be taking the lead on the advertising and the job description piece. So at that point, we could, you know, go to them and say, okay, we have a pool, you know, three qualified candidates. And then maybe at that point, we see if they're interested in picking up more hours and come up with that.
So the Hanson Town Administrator who was reported today, has been put on administrative leave?
Oh, he has? I wasn't aware of that.
I was just curious if...
No, I wasn't aware of that. I wasn't, I was off last week, so I haven't talked to him since last Thursday. So I'll have to look into that. I do have the Conservation Commission chairperson from there, all of his info. And he seemed pretty excited to talk with Linda Letty and kind of get started on some things with us, so we'll see. So that's all I have on that. The RFPs are out for the Lots on Prospect Road and they are due back, proposals are due June 26th and they're being received in the treasurer's office until mid-year. And then for correspondence, we have, let's see. Department of Housing and Community Development has made it formal that they are accepting grant applications for the Housing Choice Program. I think we should definitely look into this. It's specifically for towns with population under 7,000. So it seems like something that would fit us pretty well. But I just want to see if it's fully applicable. There's some discussion in here about what we have on file as far as an acceptable ADA plan. And that's something that we might want to improve upon.
So just refresh me, what does this cover, Housing Choice Program?
It's, it's kind of a variety of things. You can use it to create not so much a housing production plan, because we already have that, but you can look at targeted areas and see where you might want to put affordable housing. You can also apply for money through that grant to actually get infrastructure dollars. So if you had a location already in mind, which I don't think we're quite at that stage, then you can actually apply for physical construction grants.
So this could fit into the master campus plan?
I think it would, definitely. It would sort of formalize it a little bit more too. So if we were interested in putting housing here in some capacity, this would give us kind of a vehicle to do that and formalize it a little bit more.
Okay.
So I think we should definitely look into it. The applications are not due until July 11th, so we can figure that out at that point. I'm just looking here. The application doesn't appear to be, you know, overly time-consuming. So I assume it's something that I could handle, we can do in-house here as opposed to waiting for the grant person. That would be kind of a tall order, I think, for them if they don't start till after July 1st. We also have here a request, this is for a bike ride on Saturday, September 14th. And this is the Harbor to the Bay Ride. And they want to come through town between 8:30 a.m. and 11 a.m. And they will be utilizing Route 58, turning onto Mayflower Road, and then taking a right towards Route 80. So they are looking for signature on here.
This is one we've done in the past, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Who pays for the police detail?
They do.
They do?
Can I get a certificate of insurance naming us as additional agent on their policy?
So I'm glad that we're supporting these. We have talked in the past about being careful not to add too many more necessarily, but I make a motion that we approve this...
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess, no.
We also...
You get to sign that.
Okay.
Have the notification from the Town of Pembroke that their Board of Selectmen has reorganized. Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, no, all right, maybe we can each look at it. Thank you.
And then in the Plimpton Halifax Express, there was a very nice write-up about Plimpton's Memorial Day parade and celebration.
It was a very nice write-up.
Can I just say in passing, I, so many people have come up and mentioned how special that parade was. I'm not even sure what's different over previous years, but people were really, really touched. No rain and a band.
Didn't rain.
I think more people marching and more people coming out to watch. All right, so was that it?
I have one, just one more thing to request on it. And I'd rather have us do this now again. I don't know if she sent this back to me because it had John's name as chair and now your chair.
Okay.
There's the date on it, but it's, it's the V and A nursing.
All right, and we did already vote to sign this.
I'd rather, no, we did Christian Unia to represent Plimpton on the board. This is, yeah, this is for the upcoming fiscal year to have the nursing, the visiting nurse.
Okay.
And we've done it for two years with her.
All right, do we need to sign, vote to sign this contract?
Yes, just for those two sticky guys.
Okay.
There's two of them because they're two originals, it's the same thing. And one we keep and I give copy to Barbara.
So this is just voting to enter a contract with the Visiting Nurses Association of Cape Cod to provide services, public health services?
Yes.
For the town of Plimpton?
Because I think it's a grant that comes in, it's X amount of dollars if you look at it. I think it's $1,500 roughly.
The council on... It's the same one.
I think it is.
Yeah, I believe it's $1,500. It's in there. It might be on the last page. $1,500?
I don't see it, any dollar amount, Bree, but they, they pay for everything.
Yeah.
It's through a grant? Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion that we sign the contract with the Visiting Nurses Association of Cape Cod to provide the public health nursing services to the residents of the town of Plimpton for 2020, the fiscal year 2020.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, you want to do quick grants and raves?
Sure.
Did you have something else first?
I was just going to suggest, Liz, in the Halifax Express article, there was a long article on the committee of searching for the new superintendent, you probably should read, I don't know if you saw it.
I did.
Yeah, we just got back.
She's on the committee.
I'm on the committee.
I know, that's why I suggested you read it. I don't know if it's true or not, you got to keep us in...
Okay, who wants to do raves and raves? All right, I'll go first, and mine would be the Memorial Day Parade, and Bree and the other committee members who work so hard to put that together, because it's, it's definitely challenging, to use one of Mark's terms, it'd be like herding cats, trying to get all that information from everyone in a timely manner to put it together, so thank you, great job, and it really was special this year, and it, sitting there watching all the groups coming down is just amazing, it's amazing, yeah, awesome.
It worked, it was a good time.
It is.
It did the Americana.
Yeah, it really was, and it, like I said, it didn't rain.
No.
I think there is, but...
I guess that's my rave as well, I had a little bit of epiphany up there on the bandstand, that sense of Americana, that sense of community, that somehow below the surface differences and antagonisms that seem to go on in politics, there was some kind of unity, and it was a momentary kind of ineffable insight, but it was a hint that there's another way to be, and just, such a great parade.
That was great. All right, we skipped right over the minutes.
I've got it, there you go.
Okay, all right, what's your rave?
Well, third, the Memorial Day, but...
Thank you, John.
One of the things I also wanted to do was the rave for the town cleanup, they have every street covered in town, and I think that's a first that I know of.
That is a first, yeah.
So, people were signed up, and if you ride around, it looks better.
It does, it looks nice.
So, that should last a week or two, and then we'll do it all over again.
And I saw they, I'm not sure who pays for this, it might be the state that brings in a tree company that does the on-ramp at Spring Street?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they do the on-ramp and both sides, and it really makes a big difference, so they keep up with that, they do that all summer long, so, yeah, I'm not sure where the money comes from, but we don't pay for it, but it certainly is nice to have it cleaned up when we get on the highway.
They did line painting recently.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they have done, yeah, it does look nice.
I'm excited about that.
All right, so we've got two sets of minutes, we've got May 6th, and we've got May 20th. So, my only comment about May 6th was with Liz, she's gone back and forth with TA and ED, I just think we need to be consistent. How about TA?
I like to be a woman of mystery.
I like TA.
So, it's TA, TA?
Yeah, TA, Town Administrator, okay, not Ed, okay.
Yeah, I didn't see anything there.
All right, I wasn't there, so do you guys want to make a, make a motion?
So, I'll make a motion that we accept the wardis selection minutes of May 6, 2019, as written.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
I'm sorry, as amended.
As amended, with TA. TA in place of ED. Okay, so now on the 20th, the only thing I had was, this was about the ambulance billing and collection service, the motion says CJ made motion to approve the ambulance billing and collection service with pro EMS services upon receipt of the appendices and favorable review by TA and Chief Silva, effective 6/1/19, seconded John. So, I think you added that stipulation in there, John, that you just wanted to make sure that it had been reviewed by Liz and Chief Silva, so if you could add that, and then just change that ED to TA, that's all I had.
Okay.
All right, so make a motion that we approve the minutes from May 20th as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, awesome, so we're current.
I think Liz also has LD in there.
So, we're going to head upstairs to take a look at, actually, we're going to do both, what, the basement and the...
Yeah, both.
Upstairs to kind of take a look at it and see what potential is there.
So, let's start down this deal first, okay?
So, we're going to go bad to good?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, I don't think...
So, the recording will end there.
So, the recording will end now, but our meeting will continue. Do you want to come with us? Perfect.